Item number four, project discussion. And at our last meeting, we talked briefly about our, the architects, Tai Su Kim Partners, who worked on the project with the last committee. Our charge allows us to continue working with Tai Su Kim Partners. And I wanted to open it up to discussion because my thought is that it might be helpful before we make a recommendation that we bring Tai Su Kim in to meet the committee so that we have an opportunity to hear from them about the previous plans and some of their thoughts going forward. And before adopting that, I wanted to hear from the group as to what you all thought about that. Any ideas, suggestions?
I will say, oh geez, in libraries, excellent reputation. So.
Mark, do you have any thoughts on Tai Su Kim and bringing them in?
Yeah, can you, I'm getting a lot of interference when everybody else speaks. It's breaking up.
It's really breaking up. And I have no idea what the problem is. It seems as though once I stopped. It seems as though once I stopped my video, it's working better. Oh, well, maybe.
Mark, are you still hearing interference?
You're coming clearly, but no one noticed.
So Mark, do you have any thoughts on Tai Su Kim bringing them in to meet the committee before we decide to get them or not?
I think that's a very good idea. I, I think we would be, our, our best position would be to continue with them if we so desire. I mean, they did a tremendous amount of work. They looked at a lot of locations in town. They put the full program together. They had a lot of different options that they looked at. They've got, they went through the full vetting process to be selected the first time. They've got great library experience. And I know Greg, you've worked with them on the Hartford Library Project as well. So I would hope that it's going to be easy for us to make that decision to keep them, to continue with them. And if it makes it easier for everybody to bring them in, perhaps to our next meeting, have them review what they did last time, so everybody's comfortable with continuing with them. And also looking at the speed of what they did, rather than reading and looking at drawing. I'm sure they'd be willing to come and do that.
Lois, I know you worked with them as well. You have any thoughts? You're muted.
I, I think, I think that they were very good and I agree with Mark, but I wonder if we have any requirements in terms of bidding that would prevent us from doing that.
Our charge is clear that we're allowed to continue with President Architect.
Correct. It's only in the event that we decided not to use Tai Su Kim would we be required to go out for bids.
Please excuse, please excuse me if I have not been able to look at the file at, at anything because I'm not home, but next, I'll be home in two weeks and can do it.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on bringing Tai Su Kim in to meet with the committee? Any objections?
Michelle is.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, can you hear me now? My sound online is just terrible. It's horrible. What, what I, what I did want to say, if you can hear me, can you?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think that there's anything wrong with having the architect who did the previous work come forward for a discussion, as long as it's with the understanding that we have not made a decision with regard to recontracting or reassigning anybody in the final state. We can't do that anyway without a quorum, but I think that it would be a good idea if the architect would be willing to do so, to come and speak to us if he is still interested in coming forward with this project. Who knows, you know, with the time passage. But nonetheless, I would certainly be interested in hearing what he has to say. I realize that we can't take, take up people's professional time for no good reason at all, but I think we have enough basis to want to reconsider what has already been considered in the positive. I would just not want to say that there would go along with that, any kind of final conclusion that we have decided to go in that route until we've had a chance to hear what the architect has to say. And also would give us more time to review the record that we have given, which even for myself as an urban planner, being that I haven't seen hardly any of it, it's quite a volume of material to digest. So that would be my position.
I agree with that. And, and if we were also thinking in mind of, of changing the actual locations. I think that that's something that should be discussed prior to bringing them back in, because based on the conceptual information that they've provided thus far, it is for the current site.
Just, just to clarify that, the, the, the current architect provided us everything that we asked for, which included the existing site and the town hall site. And they had also looked at doing a combination with the community center building. So the architect is not tied to a specific site. They were more or less tied to whatever the committee had asked them to do. So.
Mr. Chair, can I try?
Not married to a particular solution.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I interrupt for a minute? I'm not quite sure, but Soraya was saying that she couldn't log on. Did she make it on?
I just got on.
Okay, I'm sorry, sweetie. I'm, I was tied up into something else, but I wanted to make sure.
No problem. Thank you.
You're welcome. Please excuse me. I will not be able to be in the meeting. I'm tied up into something else right now. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Wundunzi, you okay with that? Did you hear Mark's statement about Tai Su Kim looked at various sites?
Yes, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. But I, I mean, I would just say in, in mind in our previous discussion, that we, we were still going to explore other locations. To not have the ability to see the, the guy.
I apologize for the logistics here, folks. I know we're all bearing with it. Okay, so Nancy, why don't you and I catch up following the meeting and we'll see if we can connect with Tai Su Kim and hopefully get them on the agenda for our next meeting. And I guess that would dovetail into our next item of business was adoption of the meeting calendar for the remainder of 2020. Hopefully everyone received that. Nancy, thank you for your help in putting that together. And I believe we currently have a quorum, so we should be able to vote on that. Like to entertain a motion to accept the calendar for the remainder of 2020. Motion.
I'll move that we took the calendar for 2020.
Thank you, Lois. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand or something. Any opposition? Great. Thank you. The next item of business under item four is appointment of secretary and wanted to thank Michelle Bononi for agreeing to be our secretary. Michelle brings a wealth of knowledge to the town, building, urban planning, and we're very excited and happy that she has agreed to help us in the capacity of secretary. So Michelle, thank you so much.
Well, you need, you need to thank me. Nancy is doing the, Nancy is doing the bulk of the work.
That is true, but thank you anyway.
Okay.
Yeah. Future meetings, again, our next meeting will be on the 26th at 6:00 PM. There, there was something I did want to share with the group and sort of get some feedback from you all. I was thinking that it might be helpful for us to submit something to the messenger, a short article about the library building committee commencing its activities, sort of layout, generically what our plans are, just so that the public is aware that we are working and coming up with some preliminary plans and the progress plan. And I just wanted to find out from you all if you were comfortable with that at this point in time, or if you prefer to wait. So I just wanted to open that up for discussion. And I'll mute myself so that others can try.
I, I think that's a, a good idea. It's not going to have a lot of content to it at this point, but, but I think it's good to let people know it's, it's, something has started.
I agree. I think that, given that everybody is kind of isolated right now, the messenger is kind of a lifeline. And I think it's important for people to understand that the process is underway. So there's no misconception that nothing is happening.
I think in, I think in doing so, we have to be, put the positive spin on it that we're moving ahead in spite of a whole series of things which are difficult right now, including the town budget. We have to say that we can't just stand still because of these, this moment in time.
I agree. And I think the, the community would be happy to see that we've become active. And I think as we go along in this process, we should keep the community abreast via the messenger as we go through the different stages. So that they know that we're going to keep the momentum and not just be a committee that's, that's not really active, but proactive and moving forward.
Maybe also, as we do make some more progress, that's maybe a little more substantive. Maybe Elizabeth, you would be able to kind of give people updates somewhere on the library site as well.
That's a great idea, Ava.
Ava, did you have anything specific in mind?
No, not really. Maybe just kind of, you know, even if it's just sort of a chatty, almost blog-like little piece of the library site, you know, keeping you up to date on the new library's progress, just to make it very positive and so that people know that as things occur, they're being kept in a loop.
That sounds great, Ava.
I also wanted to let people know that the web, the webpage on the town's website now has been active. I'm able to post things on it. Your names are all on there. And that's where all the minutes, as well as the, the agendas are now appearing.
All right, thank you, Leah. I just read your comment in the chat room and actually I saw yours as well. So thank you all. I think those are great ideas. And we will, I'll, I'll work with several members of the committee to get something out to the messenger and coordinate with Elizabeth to make sure that we have something that is, it won't be comprehensive, but at least it will be enough to let folks know what we're doing and why we're doing it and how important it is, tempered at the same time with the world we're living in. And, you know, it's just, I think we have to be very cautious and careful how we market and present this project, because this is a very difficult time. I was talking with someone earlier about the library and they were concerned about, you know, getting groceries in the house. And, and so I, I do think we want to be very mindful of the community and the state and the nation and the world right now. But I do think that this project is very important and we are going to, you know, move full steam ahead to get something that we can all be proud of in town. I also spoke with Elizabeth earlier. I mentioned this at our last meeting. It's my hope that we will be able to tour one or two libraries in the state, you know, some fairly recent construction, just to get some ideas as to some of the best practices and see what other folks are doing. With COVID, I understand that the timing is something we'll have to figure out and whether it's virtual or if it's live, but we will sort of caucus with the group and chat with you all to find out what you think is best there. But we also want to schedule some time as a walkthrough of our, our current, our branches here in town, so that we're all familiar with the current state of the library. And again, I'll be working with Elizabeth trying to schedule those and hopefully we can do, do them in small groups or find a creative way to make sure that we can all participate in some fashion. We have a section on the agenda for public comments. Are there any public comments?
Can we go back to the minutes?
Yes, okay. All right, why don't we go back to old business and review and approve of the minutes? Everyone received the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
Is there a second? Is that Lois okay? Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or any abstentions? Great, thank you. Going to public comments. Are there any public comments? Nancy, you have anything? You're muted.
Thank you. There are three people here. I don't know if, if anybody that's on the public would like to speak, can you raise your hand? They're just watching us, I guess. So then, oh, wait a minute, Mark Saunders would like to speak. There we go. Okay, Mark.
Hello, all. Thanks for the work that you're doing. I just wanted to chime in and I was, I was a little disappointed to hear of Joan Gieders stepping down from the, the chair position of the board. I hope that doesn't affect all of you in this process. I know that she has some, some issues that caused her to want to do that and we'll leave those between her and whoever the issues were with. But that said, it's happy to see a well-working organization here. Thank you for what you're doing.
Anyone else, Nancy?
Sorry, that's why I was trying to get you to talk.
Okay, great. We are going to be done in record time. Before we conclude the meeting, I just wanted to take a minute to find out from folks on the committee, what is your favorite thing about the library here in town? And I, I think that's important as we sort of vision, envision what the new library might look like. It's often helpful to kind of talk about what we enjoy the most and make sure that we keep that in the forefront of our discussions going forward. And I'll start off by saying I really enjoy the variety and the magnitude of the programming that the, the library offers for all people, different ages, and it's just an incredible array of programming.
I, I like the, the vast resources that it, that it has, that they, they both offer, really. I've, I've gone to crochet at Faith McMahon's on Saturdays. I've brought my daughter to both locations for private tutoring. She's participated in the youth programs that they offer with Nikki and Ms. Linda downstairs, the program, and it's awesome. I like that I can rent new movies without paying for them or rent a CD, you know, without having to buy it or, or stream it. I like that when my laptop is down, that I could go to either locations and there are, there, nine times out of 10, there's a computer available. If it's, if it's packed in the adult area, then I'm free to go downstairs to the youth area and/or utilize the Mac computers on the other side. I like that if I, I need to scan documentation or, you know, make copies, that's my go-to place at, at both locations. So, I mean, I've gone, I've utilized both since being a child. And I can't say enough about the staff that works at both locations and the resources. And I like to, if the book isn't in Bloomfield and it may be in Windsor, I can either go to Windsor and they'll hold it for me, or they'll send it to Bloomfield or any of the, the library network. I like discounts at the museums that I can get the coupons there at the library. So, I mean, I, I've always enjoyed it.
I think Wundunzi hit the nail on the head. There are a lot of services and programs that I have enjoyed over the years, the, from the DVDs to just sitting in the library and reading and having that quiet place to go in and read a magazine. I use the scanner, the copier, just every aspect of the library I've been involved in, poetry readings, bringing my grandkids to the library. So I'm very active with the library presently. I'm only engaging in the overdrive usage, but I still am very thankful that I have that opportunity to still receive my, my books online.
I enjoy the reputation. I, I hear from people out of town. There's a lot of respect for the people and the resources and being available compared to their own libraries. You know, that and the community room just being constantly, constantly used as a, a link to everybody in town. I hope we can get back to that soon.
I like the attitude of the people there, always very, very positive and helpful. Over the last years that we've lived in Bloomfield, we've used most of those services too, as we start out with young children and now have, have grandchildren. And I like that it's a place where the whole community comes together. And that's really what I hope we can achieve with the new library, that it continues to be that kind of place. And I have a special project that I'd also like to do with respect to employment and job opportunities, but that will come up later.
Proster Library is the reason that I became a librarian. Linda was my children's librarian and the staff there, including her, are just warm and kind and friendly, and that is everything that a librarian should be. And yeah.
Awesome.
That's awesome. Thank you, Leah, everyone for sharing. I don't want to leave anyone out. Soraya, I know we have you on. Do you want to share or don't feel compelled?
Sure, I'll share. Um, I have a hard memory of everything. I have a living influence on my entire life. I remember taking trips there and reading books and Linda, Gabriele, I remember her. I really enjoy the accommodations for young children. I vividly remember being a part of the summer reading challenges and receiving prizes when I would accomplish a certain amount of reading. I enjoyed playing there. And more recently, now that I'm a young adult, I've reserved rooms there for meetings that I would have with young women and people that I was mentoring or people that I was working with, I would use rooms there. So I'm hoping to see the library continue to be a place for youth and young adults of Bloomfield, a demographic that I'm a part of.
I'd like to add, aside from services that I've used over time, especially remembering Linda as well, we worked together when I was actually still in the school library in Bloomfield before I went to another district and all of the services that my daughter enjoyed. But I'm also aware that there are plenty of people in town who have gone to the library for help navigating the increasingly technological world. People who don't necessarily know how to use AppleTrack or other online application tools, people who need help with a resume. You know, we've, we've heard many stories and thank yous from people who have hoped to maybe get a part-time job and have wound up with a full-time job with benefits, people who would otherwise kind of fall through the cracks. And instead, they're supported and encouraged and, and mentored by an incredible staff at both libraries. And, you know, the new building, having more room and more equipment available, maybe classrooms where people could, could learn together, that's really exciting prospect. You know, the, the library has always been extremely inclusive and I, I'm hoping that the new facility will make that even more achievable.
And we, of course, we want to hear from our fabulous director.
I was going to say that the best part about the library are the patrons and the staff. And right now, I think that the staff is limited by space constraints in terms of being able to showcase all of their excellent qualities and abilities and ways to share and engage with the community. But even during these times under COVID-19, they have been so creative, intentional and amazing in finding those ways to best serve the community. So I continue to look forward to seeing all of the ways that that will play out in the future. And that's one of the wonderful things about being on this building committee with all of you, is helping us envision that future and creating that space where all of these things that you all mentioned can happen to a broader section of our community. Thanks, Greg.
Okay. Well, I, I think that is it on the agenda. I wanted to take a moment to, again, thank everyone on this committee. I wanted to personally thank Mark, who took 45 minutes of his time to sit down with me via the phone and talk about some of the work that the past committee did. and talk about some of the work that the past committee did and some of the issues facing us and some of the challenges and opportunities. But I think what I want to share, and I'm so excited with this committee, is that I want us to be open-minded about what the potential is for our town and this library. I know that there's a lot of prior work done, but I want to go into this process, you know, being open-minded as to locations, what a building may look like. And I just think that we have a great opportunity here, and I want to make the most of it. And I just want to reiterate to not only the committee, but folks in town, how important this project is to us right now in that we are moving full force ahead. And I think that we will establish a timeline. We'll meet that timeline, and we will present what we deem to be the best library that this town can have. And I'm excited about that prospect, and I'm glad that we're all riding the bus together and going to make that happen. So, thank you all for your participation and willingness to serve the town. And I will sort of open it up for any final comments, but if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And thank you all so much, and we will get the minutes out and an agenda for our next meeting, and hopefully, see you soon. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, everyone. Thank you so much.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye.